Comes the countdown. Good evening and welcome back to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Valentine's Day, Wednesday, February 14th. Where would you rather be on a night like this, full of romance? And here we are. I was in the car wash earlier with my wife. That's an exciting time. So Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move that counsel defer the discussion on item 3.2 to after-question-and-answer period on the committee of the whole agenda, thereby creating a second closed-meeting section, with the new discussion being 8.1.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. We have no delegations tonight. Confirmation of minutes 5.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for January 24th, 2024. Counselor Peterson.
I'm sorry, I am still finding my place. Where are we, Your Worship?
Second page of the skeleton.
On number five?
Yeah.
I move that counsel adopt the January 24th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented in Attachment 1.
You okay? Thank you. All in favor? And that motion is carried. We move now to item 6, Business, 6.1, Garden and Garage Suites Discussion, which is on page 24. Good evening, Chuck, and welcome. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Your Worship, and members of council. I just have a quick staff introduction tonight before we get started. I would like to welcome Katerina Backen, or Kate. Kate has experience from Vienna, Austria, and before that she worked for City of Kiev, Ukraine, as an urban planner. Kate joined our team in July of 2023 and has become a valuable addition to our team. So I just want to say, welcome, Kate, and thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the staff. We hope you enjoy it here in Slava, Ukraine.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Hello, I'm Slava. My name is Kate. I am a planner in the Development Services Department. Today, I would like to present the proposed regulation in the land use by law regarding garden and garage suites. Firstly, I would like to mention types of additional suites available, which include basement, garden, and garage suites. Today, we will focus on the latter two. In development services, we sometimes receive inquiries from citizens regarding the development of garden and garage suites. However, our current regulation lacks clarity in this area. Presently, our land use by law only regulates garden suites under Section 3.25. These suites can be developed in the R2X district, but only on specific lots in Stradnau Lakes. My colleague Bengen had previously presented to council primarily focusing on garden suites, their types and designs. Additionally, we are conducting public engagement to gather community input. One of our main challenges in this topic is the lack of clear focus for housing affordability nationwide. Prices and mortgage rates daily contributing to a housing crisis. We think one of the solution to this problem may be implementing precise, clear, comprehensive, and understandable regulations for developing additional suites. Before delving into the specifics of these regulations, I would like to discuss the terminology surrounding these additional dwellings. Terms such as secondary suite, garden suite, garage suite, and others are used across different jurisdictions. For clarity, we have opted for garden suites and garage suites, each with their distinct definitions. The main difference in regulations between garden and garage suites are as follows. For garden suites, the location is in the rear yard. For garage suites, they can be situated in both, the rear yard and front yard. Garden suites must be separated from the principal building for privacy purposes. We cherish garage suites don't have these restrictions. Garden suites should have an internal passageway with the minimum width and facilitate barrier-free access, while garage suites should be above or attached to the garage. About the public engagement. The public engagement took place on September 3, 2022, with 257 individuals interviewed. The majority of responders live in single-family unit dwellings, 74 percent, and additionally, 87 own their property. About 39 expressed interest in the regulations, while nearly 19 are interested in constructing one on their property. However, 10 percent are opposite to the construction of new garden suites. On the other hand, 64 would welcome garden suites in their neighborhood. Furthermore, almost 65 of responders believe that home businesses should be allowed in garden suite. Regarding the purpose of using a garden suite, 61 percent of respondents answered to house an elderly relative. Almost 44 choose to generate income, and 24 choose to house a growing family. In conclusion, people want to know about regulations, and a significant percentage of them want to build garden suites for various purposes. We should provide them with precise, clear, comprehensive, and understandable regulations. To better understand the regulations of additional suites, I analyzed regulations for garden and garage suites in different cities, towns, and counties such as Oktox, Calgary, Edmonton, and Ma. The main requirements in these areas include land use regulations, requirements for the landlord, and requirements for their building. The main principles we should consider when creating regulations are land use regulations, building code and safety standards, parking, additional parking stall, permit and application process, property tactics, landscaping, and tree protection, orientation, layout, and privacy, sustainable building design, energy efficiency, and material efficiency. Here are some examples of garden suites and our draft definition. A garden suite means a second dwelling unit on a parcel used as separate accommodation that is accessory to the primary dwelling and may be a standard lot unit or part of detached accessory structure. Similarly, here are some examples of garage suites and our draft definition. A garage suite means a second dwelling unit on a parcel located above or adjacent to a garage structure, serving a separate living space from the principal dwelling. Next, I conducted a SWOT analysis implementing for garden and garage suite regulations. Our strengths are additional income, property value, flexible use, and support for affordable housing. Our opportunities: affordable housing solutions, rising demand, and sustainable urban development. Weakness: regulatory hurdles in retail costs, privacy concerns. And threats: regulatory changes, market conditions, neighborhood resistance. In conclusion, the results have been complied with discussion. We have created the document outlining regulations for garden and garage suites. Land use regulations: garden suite will be only in discretionary use in R1, R1S, R2, and CR districts. Garage suite will be discretionary use in R1, R1N, R1S, R2, R2X, and CR districts. Clear landlord regulations: location, only for garden suite, it will be rear yard. Minimum area of the landlord, 400 square meters. Minimum width of landlord, 10 meter. Access to the suite, minimum distance from the principal building, only for garden suite, it will be 4 meter. Additional parking stall, landscaping. Clear regulations to the building: maximum height, not higher than principal building, architecture style same as principal building, neighborhood, neighbor's notification, because it will be discretionary use. We eagerly await your valuable input and insights regarding the development of garden and garage suites within our town. Your comments and opinions are highly appreciated, and will help shape the future direction of our community. Thank you for your attention. I am available to address any questions or concerns.
Thank you for your presentation. Counselor Mitzner.
When we were in Canmore, I believe it's Medicine Hat or Lethbridge, where they have pre-plans that the town has or the city has approved the plans. So when they come in and it's 800 to 1,000 square feet, they can physically see a floor plan that they could take to a builder or they could cost it out. Because you're looking at $200,000 to do one of these without an existing garage, because the servicing cost, all the services have to be brought in from the front to the very back of the property. So that's a huge expense, but they just found the more they could share with the public, the more cost, cost analysis, open houses, awareness, stuff like that. Because right now, we can put that all out there, but unless we share how to do it, there's people that aren't going to move forward. Thank you.
And if I can add to Counselor Mitzner's statements, one of the other things they did in some of the places was they reduced the costs of servicing so the town would eat some of the cost of providing services to the garage suites or the garden suites to encourage. It might also be, like you were saying, it might be we need to have a regular comm strategy, you know, every certain period of time to keep this front and center on people's minds when they look at our Facebook page or our utility inserts. Deputy Mayor Langmead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to build on Counselor Mitzner's comments, one of the other things that I heard in Canmore from, was either Medicine Hat or Canmore, was that they had really good data on where their services were already located. So one of the big unknowns for homeowners who are looking to complete this project is knowing where those services are and how they could tie in, and what the approximate cost of that tie-in might be, was a hurdle that they experienced and that helped them. So the question is, do we have good data on where our utilities are, and could we provide a similar general estimate of what that might look like?
We could probably take a, we do have pretty good data on where the services are. Whether we could provide incentives or not on servicing, that's a bit of a different question we have to explore.
Yes, sorry, I wasn't suggesting incentives on servicing. It was just to understand where the services are located, so they can have an understanding of how much it might cost, you know, are they running 50 meters diagonally across their property, or is it a, you know, a few meter run?
So that would be on the real property report, right? So if you look at that, the utility right-of-way. Like in the case of my lot, I would actually have trouble doing a garden suite and not being on top of the utilities. The utility right-of-ways in some of the areas in this town are very different than what I'm used to, like they're right through the middle of your yard. And in my case, with my corner lot, they run right through my backyard too, right? So they're, servicing would actually, in the newer areas at least, be very reasonable here, but like I said, we have good information, but it's, I mean, it's also on residents' real property reports as well, right?
I'm probably not the only resident that has absolutely no idea where her real property report is. So just from a level of service to the community, that's a question that they experienced.
We have those on file, don't we, Jamie? Yeah, like we could provide those to residents.
So it's just that level of service. The other thing that comes to mind when I'm thinking about garden and garage suites, and I was watching your presentation and listening to your presentation, was I noticed that there's setbacks from principal residents for garden suites but not for garage suites. Is that because there are already setbacks prescribed for garages?
Yes, because we have already.
Okay. I also noticed that only, that either development, a garden suite or a garage suite, would need an additional parking space. Does the garage you're developing count as that? You know, if you're building a garage and a garden suite, do you also need to add a third parking space out, like another parking space out front, or would the garage count as your parking space?
Actually, we thought a lot about parking stalls, and mostly all people have garage for two cars and like front yard, front yard for also two parking stalls. And as for me, it will be enough for parking stalls, even if it will be garden suite. I mean, principal building plus garden suite.
So the idea is you must have four parking stalls available?
Actually, three.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay. But the new garage, and that could include the new garage they're building. So if they have one out front, and then they build a new garage, and then they have three parking stalls and put a suite over it, do they need to somehow build another parking stall? They just built a garage?
No, it will be enough.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, and then?
Thank you for the question.
No, that's okay. And then the final question I had was, in, it was about newer areas, because I, you know, we're talking about mortgages becoming more expensive, and I realized that for a lot of families, they would actually have to take out a second mortgage in order to afford this development. So in communities where I've seen garden suites and garage suites go forward, they're most commonly found on new builds. It's something that a new build would do, because they can kind of plan ahead for it and do it that way. So in terms of when we're building new areas, when we do the servicing, are we planning the servicing so that if you buy a house in a new area that doesn't have a garage suite, it would be easy to put it in? Or would, and then kind of the second half of that question is, are we designing the servicing so that it's easy for developers to put in these secondary suites if they want and if it's profitable?
Of course, for new construction, it will be easier, but for current situation, we also can consider additional suites. It's like, depends from districts, if it will be allowed in this district. It depends of landlord area. It depends of, we have regulations like site, maximum site coverage, and we will consider all of these regulations.
Okay.
And if people have enough landlord and like area of landlord, yes, it will be possible.
Okay, and then the final question I have that is now, oh. One thing that I've heard a lot about, a lot about in the last week, actually, is apparently there are houses, portable houses for sale on Amazon now, that literally show up to your house, and they're these little tiny homes. Now, I don't know what the coating is, I don't, I don't know anything like that, but is that like, is that something that could apply as a garden suite, as long as it meets all the building code regulations and all of that? Could someone order a house off Amazon and put it in their backyard, as long as it complies with this bylaw?
Well, thanks, Your Worship, and through the chair. We saw those ones too as well, for you can order a home off of Home Depot, I think the one I saw was. We asked our building inspector, and the answer is, they can be used as a seasonal dwelling, but they don't meet the code to be a permanent, full-time dwelling on the lot. So you can use one as a seasonal dwelling, but not full-time throughout the year.
So I'm assuming that eventually that will change, and there will be four-season ones available. I'm just assuming that the product will improve over time, things generally do. So if it does come to the time where it's a four seasons, that is something that they could, that could be considered, so you're not looking at a potentially $200,000 project.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Cool? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, final question.
Yes.
With housing, with the housing crunch in Strathmore, a lot of people are living in RVs right now. That is a housing answer for them. Would an RV in a backyard count as a garden suite? If it's plumbed in? So it's okay to live in an RV in a campground, but not in a backyard?
You'd have to take the wheels off. Thank you for the question, actually, no. Our creation vehicle, it's not garden, it's not garden suite.
Okay, could I put an RV just in my background without calling, backyard without calling it a garden suite then? I'm just, I'm looking for ways, these are things that are happening around town. People are living in RVs in backyards. And I, my, you know, one half of my concern is, are we going to tell them you cannot live in an RV in your backyard because it has to conform to this, when that might be their only affordable form of housing right now? Is that something that could be a concern in the future?
Yeah, it's a good question, Your Worship, and I do know that that is happening out there. My response is that we've got rules and regulations for parking of these vehicles in our land use by law, and I believe they need to be parked on a pad of some kind. Other than that, I think that our safety codes officer would have the same answer, that these are just seasonal dwellings, and you're not supposed to be in there year-round. I hope that helps. I know that garden suites aren't meant to be the silver bullet to solve our housing crisis, but just to be a tool in our tool belt to potentially help, that's all.
Absolutely, and I understand they're a tool. I just, I just don't want, you know, we talk sometimes about unintended consequences, and if we say, okay, well, this is what a garden suite is and how a garden suite looks, and then all of a sudden, we have someone living in an RV in a backyard, that, you know, is fulfilling the same purpose, and I don't want us to get into a situation where we go, well, you can't have that RV there, even if it's parked on a pad, because now this is a dwelling unit. This is a dwelling unit you have in your yard, and you're not meeting these setbacks. Safety code guy might say that they're not four seasons, but I think our campgrounds say that they are.
One of the requirements for a legal garden suite too would be a permit as well, so we would have that, I think, in our arsenal. You'd be required to have a development permit for a suite, so we would have a look at that RV and say, you have no permit.
But an RV is, I guess this is where I'm kind of getting to, you're saying, okay, you don't have a permit, it's for a secondary suite, which is an RV in the backyard, but the other half of that is you're saying RVs cannot be secondary suites, they say they can't. So like, you're saying you don't have a permit for a secondary suite, so you can't have the RV there, but you're also saying RVs are not secondary suites, therefore you cannot get a permit. And either way, you have someone living in an RV in a backyard, that I want to make sure has a warm place to live, and doesn't accidentally run afoul of this kind of, of these rules, where someone might go, this is now, this is now a dwelling, and you need to meet these, this bylaw, or you need to move, move out of the RV, this is for storage only, and then all of a sudden, someone, you know, we're at an issue where people are losing what housing they can afford. I want this to, my main feedback, I want this to be a blessing and something that can help us find more housing. I don't want to have an unintended consequence where someone who's underhoused might lose what housing they have because of some confusion with these rules. So I know they don't exist yet, so this is only feedback of just like, let's think about that carefully and make sure we're not accidentally making a situation where we're disallowing, honestly, something that's needed, which is someone living in their RV. And ultimately, the goal is to not have that, but right now, that's the reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and that's kind of why we're here tonight too, is to gather your feedback and concerns about these, because they're new for us as well. So thank you.
Counselor Mitzner, then Counselor Peterson.
Two quick questions. So we have one title, we have two dwellings. Are, is a landlord cost sharing the utilities with the second dwelling, or are you expecting two meters?
Thank you, Your Worship. We're not expecting two meters, we're not regulating that relationship at all, it's entirely up to the person on title.
Okay, second question. In order to be a four-season unit for a development permit, are they going to have to have a minimum four-foot foundation for frost levels? And if that's the case, no existing garages are going to qualify.
That's a good question, and I honestly don't know. Our building inspector would know. We can get back to you though, Counselor Mitzner. Yep, that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitzner. Counselor Peterson.
Thank you. It's kind of a follow-up to that, but I'm thinking about the discussion we had prior to this really fulsome report that we have before us regarding parking, particularly in the large lots in the downtown Westmount area. And I know tomorrow, people are going to phone at me, and they're going to ask this question, and they're going to say, what is the difference between having three parking spots, you know, for a suite versus having three people in the house, each having their own vehicle?
It's a good question. Counselor Peterson, I don't really know how to answer that. I, you know, we can't regulate how many people live in a house.
Right.
We can't regulate that, and I don't think that we make the distinguish, distinguish between a suite parking versus other parking.
So we're not going to try to enforce that?
I don't think so, no.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing too was, I think that, with regards to something that Counselor Langmead mentioned, one of the things that I see in terms of strategy, and I really agree with you, that this is, this is, you know, not a be-all, end-all, but it is a, it is a process that will assist in this whole land strategy process, but it is with regards to senior living and being able to designate. And one of the things that I saw just recently in Maple Ridge were, was a small credit union that garnered tremendous support from community by lending money to homeowners, particularly to seniors sort of on the 50-plus end, to do these kinds of suites, on the understanding that the $5,000 that they would be paying living in some kind of a seniors' unit, and the $60,000 a year, that in three years, they would pay for, for an equity-building process that they could live in for a longer period of time leading in. So it'd be really interesting to be able to see if we can broker things like that going forward. So I really appreciate what you did. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor.
Deputy Mayor Langmead.
Sorry to jump back in. Counselor Peterson reminded me about parking. And I'll kind of wrap up my thoughts on parking here. I understand that parking is a huge concern for a lot of residents, and I know I've heard it, but I can't help but think that the square footage of a garage suite is about exactly the square footage you need to park two cars. Just kind of works out that way, because it's a garage suite, right? So for every additional, every two additional parking spots we're asking people to put in to make, you know, over time to make up for these new garage suites, we're actually taking away the equivalent of one unit of land that could be used for housing. Right? In terms of the grand scheme of things, you're, for every, yeah, every additional parking spot takes up a half a unit of housing, in theory, by land square size. So, and I also think of the fact that I live across from a house that has one of those two-car garages with the separate garage doors, so it's got a driveway that's big enough to park three vehicles. I live in a, it's a regular family that lives across the street. They park three vehicles in the driveway, three vehicles in the cul-de-sac. They could bring in a roommate and have seven vehicles. But if they build a secondary suite, they have to add more parking. And that, to me, it's, when you're adding up the barriers between the cost, the fact that you have got to go through construction, every time you add a barrier, it makes it harder for someone to do. And the parking is just kind of one of those other things. And on top of that, you know, if you're looking at a, at a house that might house a student or a senior who can't, maybe can't drive, I'm just, I'm not sure that if our goal is densification, then requiring an expand, a 50%, you know, an expansion of parking about 50% of the size of footprint of what one of the housing units would be seems just, the math, the math isn't mathing for me very, very much when we add in parking on top of it. So, and especially some, you know, some houses have massive on-street party, yeah. Parking is something I'd like us to just give a lot of thought to, and a lot of thought of, what are we prioritizing here? Are we prioritizing vehicles, or are we prioritizing homes? And how many vehicles are, are we going to prioritize overall? Just, I know it's a large thing, and it can't be, there is, I don't have a number to provide where I'm like, this is the number I'm comfortable with. I don't have one. But I'd rather see someone in a house than a car on the street. So that's, that's the theory, that's just kind of the thoughts I'm having around parking is that I'm not, not so sure we need more and more and more. Thank you.
Counselor Wiley.
I'm looking forward to this discussion further as we learn more about what the policy's going to look like. Couple of questions. Can I get a copy of the presentation that I just saw tonight?
Yes, sure. Yes.
Okay. Zoning. So if I understood the zoning, we're opening it up to, like, all, I can't remember what it said, but all R1 for examples. That's not limited to the name. what it said, but all R1, for example, so that's not limited to the neighborhood, it's limited to the zone, and then when you put, I can't remember what it said up there, but say you said R1, or do you want to put it back for me?
We put it up there, sure.
R1A, everything but R3.
So that's not limiting the neighborhood, that's limiting the lot size? Like, it would be just those lot sizes, then, that are capable of?
It would just be those land use districts, Counselor.
Okay, so if you have an R1 land use, you can build a garden suite, but then it's if it, it has the proper parking, proper lot size.
Yes.
Okay, I'm following. But it's not limited by neighborhood. At no point would we be going through and saying, this neighborhood, yes, this neighborhood, no.
Yep.
Even though we recognize that certainly the new suburban neighborhoods are not going to be accommodating, I think, either of these.
Right, yeah. You're, you're correct, Counselor, thank you for the question. It, it's just those, those land use districts up there were not, it's not by neighborhood.
Okay. I didn't understand the answer to parking. So if I have a two-car garage, and I have a driveway in front, it's just two part, it's just two parking spots?
I, I think it's, you'd have two in the garage and two for the driveway as well.
Okay.
So you'd have a total of four.
And if I build a garage, sorry, I build a garden suite, I still have to add one more spot?
That'll be enough parking, the four, because I think you're only required to have two or something for the single-detached dwelling. So to add that third parking stall on-site, you can, we can support that tandem. We haven't written the regulations yet, but right now, our secondary suites, which are different than garage suites, garden suites, have that ability to support tandem parking. So that means you could make use of the four stalls on-site, you wouldn't need to add an additional one to make it five.
So then that being said, I can't see how a newer development couldn't accommodate a garden suite in the back if the backyard was large enough.
Might need help here. Jamie, what do you think?
Sure. Maybe you can talk about how many lots in town would be able to accommodate, and we need to find out how many lots would qualify based on the districts and the dimensional requirements. I think they have some numbers on that.
I calculated only for garden suite, because it, it was more possible, and it was approximately 1,370 landlords.
Can you say that again?
One hu, 1,370 landlords that could have garden suite, but also...
So about a third of the town?
What percent was that?
Twenty-two percent.
Twenty-five percent?
Yes, I think, yeah.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-five, thirty percent.
And you calculated that, or Kate calculated that using GIS measuring on Airflow?
Yeah, I think before we move forward in the, like, when you come forward with a policy, one thing I'd like to see is some examples of lots in town, is how it would accommodate, and just some visions of that parking. So I know when I was door-knocking already two years ago, this was an issue. It's going to be a huge issue two years from now and the next, and it is already a huge issue, but at the exact same time, residents are going to be saying, I don't want, I'll just say, I don't want Chestamere, I don't want that crowded, I don't want, there'd be no parking right on my residential, I don't want that. So I'm, I'm thinking a Strathmore solution is some kind of a balance between the two. So, I'm just really curious what that would look like in some different neighborhoods. If you had just some very basic drawings of where a garden suite could fit, in this type of lot, in this type of lot, in this type of lot, I think that'd be really helpful to get a visual.
Uh-huh, sure.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. Would you like to see us again at a committee of the whole, or would you like us to bring forward some regulations? How, how are you feeling?
I'd love to see you again.
Another committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just bring forward, you know, the, the information requested tonight, but I'd bring a draft bylaw forward to start kicking that around, too, right? Counselor... Sorry, I still just have one more, if that's okay. Where is the zoning map available? Is there one online, or?
Yes, we've got a zoning map online on Strathmore City. We can just go residence, land, and development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mitzner, and then Counselor Peterson.
Okay, I believe the majority of these properties that are available are downtown properties. A lot of these people don't drive anymore, or only have one vehicle. I would like to see the additional parking stall taken out, utilize the off-street parking, and follow City of Calgary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitzner. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, Counselor Mitzner, can I just follow up with that? Is that just in the downtown only you'd like to see that, or?
No, for the garden suite bylaw.
Just for the town, town-wide? So regardless of area, in the downtown Brentwood, Hillview?
When the developers do their subdivisions, there's ample off-street parking, and street parking does not belong to the individual taxpayers, and that'll be an ongoing concern forever. And City of Calgary has increased their density, and they've thrown out, they don't even do the additional parking anymore. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Your, Your Worship, just to follow up on that, one, one of the things that I noticed in, in smaller towns, in terms of the parking, relevant to the question I asked you earlier, because, you know, Counselor Wiley is exactly right, this is why people disagree with it, it's always based on, on parking. In our downtown, you know, having, having lived there for centuries, there, there is, people are over it. You know, they understand the, the concept, you know, the, we are slowly densifying our, our downtown, and so I think Counselor Mitzner is exactly right. You know, you're not going to control whether seven people live in a house, and each one of them has a vehicle or not, but one of the things that I saw in some other smaller communities who had done similar constructs was that in, in communities, so they sort of, because they had capacity in the small communities, they, they didn't, it wasn't the same across the board. So they recognized that in newer communities, that this is a bigger problem, and that there were greater capacity, because they didn't have the infrastructure issues that CEO Scoble mentioned, and so they, they would sort of base density on, on areas, on larger areas. And in their downtowns, where there was already a densification momentum, they did exactly what Counselor Mitzner was saying, in, in outlined communities, they did, they had a different solution. So, I, I just, I know that you'll get it to us in, in a way that makes sense, and much appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I'm not sure this reassures people, or what the impact would be, but when we were in Canmore, Canmore is an ideal location to be like Vancouver as far as garden suites and garage suites, and they're not finding a big uptake in this. They're having, they're having very few come to them, and because I think Counselor Mitzner has touched on it, too, the cost of, of doing these garage conversions, bringing them up to code, getting the servicing, garden suite, same thing. So they're just not getting many, many inquiries, or many people serious about putting them in.
But Your Worship, Counselor Langmead referenced it earlier, you know, the people buying the houses off of, off of Amazon, this is a new, you know, the, you know, Eaton's and Sears had catalog houses before I was born, they're now historic sites, and, and I, I saw, I think, the Shark Tank process, Dragon's Den, The Bunky Life now has a $20,000 suite that has a $15,000 winterization package. And as Counselor Langmead described, they can be delivered to your backyard. And so that is the way, that is what's going to happen. They're not going to come in in that $175,000 range anymore, they are going to be winterized for, for Canadian winters, and the rest will be up to you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and it was very good meeting you, and welcome to the town of Strathmore.
Thank you so much.
We move now to item 6.2, Letters of Support Policy Number 1109, discussion. Veronica, you're speaking to this?
Okay, good evening, Your Worship, Council. Tonight, I am bringing forward, for your consideration, the Letters of Support Policy Number 1109. We want to ensure that this proposed policy works for everyone's needs. So, I'm going to go through the policy, why it was drafted, what types of correspondence it applies to, and at the end, I have a little bit of a flowchart for what the proposed process could be, if the policy's approved, and then we can take any questions or comments that you may have. I apologize in advance that some of the information seems to repeat itself a little bit in just different forms on here. So Letters of Support Policy, this was drafted to really streamline the process that we have in issuing really common types of letters that come from the town office, and it, the goal of it is to reduce the time that we have between request and issuance. Right now, the current process, it really takes up some valuable council meeting time, for one, but the big reason that we kind of went into looking at this policy was because the current process can be slow. It can take upwards of two, three weeks from the time that we identify we need to send a thank you letter to somebody. By the time it gets to a council meeting for approval, and then is signed, that, that can be quite a lengthy time, even longer in the summer, potentially, sometimes for that. So, i- in those instances, if it's something that is urgent, it could even cause an additional special council meeting to be called, for instance, or potentially, if it's for a grant application that's coming through urgently, potentially the deadline could be missed, if we don't have an upcoming council meeting that meets, fits within those deadlines. So the new process would have the mayor, in the sense of being kind of the spokesperson for the town, and the one that signs the letters, can be responsible, in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, for providing his signature on the documents, and the big, the big piece of this policy is, is it's really provided that the document, the letter that we are asking to be signed is consistent with a council-approved plan, policy bylaw, or has a resolution number associated with it already. So it is something that has been seen before by council, and, and is, we've already aligned on. So, not for anything that, even if we have a question as to, is this good or not, that would automatically be kicked back to a council meeting, not put through this process. So some of the examples of letters recently, the thank you letter for the mids, I'm going to get this right, the mid-sized cities mayor's caucus, for that, so a thank you letter for something like that, it feels like we're a little bit of delay by the time we're like, getting that thank you out, at that scent. So really, administration is seeking feedback from council tonight on the ability to, in certain instances, I wish I could move the, the screen down a bit there, but it's really to remove the step that requires that all types of correspondence come back to a council meeting prior to a signature, and then the next piece that you kind of see peppered throughout that policy is a mention to, there's that, or CAO. Thanks, Jonathan. So there would be an option for, in, again, instances, it's important to note that that's the, in the event that the mayor or the deputy is not available to sign within the timelines, if it is something that is urgent and appropriate, that we can take that through, just to make sure that we are expediting that completion in that. So, there are four types of letters that were identified, it's all good. Letters of Support is the one that comes in from members of the community, asking for support for certain grant applications, or whatever they may have. So we've got that, and we pulled apart separately the Letters of Thanks, which would be for anything that we've had, that we are expressing gratitude towards. Letters of Recognition, we can go through that, that'll be on another slide, just for the types that would be applicable under this policy, and then any internal support requests. So if there is already an initiative underway for something, we've identified, this happens a lot with infrastructure, I think, a grant opportunity, that, that letter can just be sent out so that we can start that process without, again, waiting to come back to a council meeting for that. So, the crux of the policy really is this, that the mayor and/or CEO may issue or sign a letter of support without revisiting the item at a council meeting, if council has previously approved the resolution, and it aligns with the town policies. So the big thing that we look at is, has there been any changes? We're not changing the council's position, what's already been decided. There's no additional commitments for funding in any of this, no additional requests can come through with that for, whether it be manpower or any other kind of material from the town. And then any other new requests will be right back into the same process that we have right now, going through the town at a regular council meeting. Letters of Thanks are entirely similar to that, it's just if that fits within the criteria, that letter of thanks can be signed without coming to a council meeting. Letters of Recognition, this is the one that's a little bit different. We identified kind of three things that would fit under that, so if it's somebody who's achieved excellence in their field, and they've requested a, a letter of recognition from, from the town, or reached a milestone birthday, I'm a hundred, that's a really big deal, I'm going to get a letter from the mayor, has received recognition from another level of government, so again, another achievement that has come through that we're recognizing. Again, no commitments for funding, and new requests, and then eternal, internal requests follow the same criteria, really, for making sure that they've had all the proper checks and balances, and no additional commitments, and those, again, mostly grant applications, I would say, kind of fall under that one. So this is the process, I wanted to have a point behind me, but the policy would have, this is what the new, the new process would be, so the request for a letter would come in and be reviewed by Legislative Services to make sure that it fits with all that, the criteria that we have, and then the question will obviously be asked, that is it consistent with the council-approved plan, policy bylaw, or previous resolution? If the answer is no, right away, that's automatically going to be kicked back to a council meeting. If it's yes, this is where the difference comes in, so council still gets to see absolutely everything that comes through, we're not going to just go without everybody seeing it, but we want to provide copies of that letter electronically to everybody, and then we've written in here that we've availed two business days to respond with any concern, but I know that would be a really big point, that we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with, if that fits with regular working hours and structure, and if that needs to be longer, shorter, but two business days in the right now. The best part of this is, if you don't have any concern with the letter, we're okay to say thanks to, you know, Mayor of Cochrane, and you have no objections, you don't need to respond to anything. If we don't hear back from anybody within that allotted time period, we will continue with the process of getting that letter drafted, or sent over for signature and sending at that point. And then it's kind of being cut off at the bottom of the screen here for you, maybe not behind me, but after that correspondence is sent out, we're still going to provide council on a future agenda package with that final copy for record of the signature, so you'll still see final as it went out in that instance. Now back to that two days, if there is something, I raise my hand, I have something, a concern with something, just make sure you're letting us know, and we will stop that process at that point, and again, come back to council meetings. So, it really, like I said, the purpose is just to expedite it for us. So, I will leave that for questions. Thank you, that's the policy.
Thank you, Veronica. Counselor Wiley, then Deputy Mayor Langmead.
Love it. I love the expedition, expedition. I just, and I love the flowchart, I wanted to make sure to tell you. I, I'm going to need more than two business days, I'd prefer five business days, especially if I think about summers, if it's July, and it's also, that's the month, or sorry, August, that's the month that you'd also want to be able to get letters out quickly, so I'd prefer five business days.
Deputy Mayor Langmead.
Thank you very much. I, I was okay with two. The answer's probably somewhere in the middle there, I don't know. I, I love it, I, I love the idea, I, I love what you've written, I have, I particularly love that everything comes back to council in the end anyways, so even if it gets signed, at least, at least I know what, what we've sent out, and I love that part. The one question I do have is for Letters of Recognition. Would a letter of recognition have to be requested to go through this process, or could someone, sorry, let me clarify that further, requested by the individual that would receive the letter? Because we, we talked about when, you were talking about when a request comes in, so does someone who's turning a hundred have to go, oh yeah, if I call and ask for a letter, they'll send me one? Or does this process allow us to kind of identify those situations and move forward with them on our own?
Through the chair, yes, correct. Through the cherry, yes, correct. They can be nominated by somebody else, but if you wanted to ask for one yourself, too, we would not stop that.
I, I was just thinking, you know, we might hear through, through channels or through, you know, people we know in the community, oh, did you hear that Shelley had her 100th birthday the other day, and it was really good, and now we know that Shelley over at Wheatland Lodge has had 100th birthday, and I can, you know, the process would, I'm just kind of spitballing here, the process could be that I could email the mayor and say, hey, did you know that Shelley over at the lodge has had a 100th birthday? And then the mayor, and then we could draft a letter and go through the process as outlined in your beautiful flow chart. Does that, that all sounds right?
Absolutely.
Then I love it even more. Uh, yeah, I, I'm a big fan of this, I, I think it's great, and thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you. My only question is, what if there's a time crunch, and you get through this, you get through this flow chart, and there is one concern, and it may not even be a major one, but time is of the essence, say, for a grant or something?
That would potentially, sorry, through...
Yep.
That would potentially go back to a special council meeting then, or something?
Okay.
That we may need to call in order to get something accomplished.
Okay. I'm just thinking, for example, um, there's been a request from me for a letter to support different grants for the upcoming pow-wow in June, and what was said to me was, there's a, a real time crunch on this, so there's your notice, too. I do need a letter for supporting various grants, and Melody is one you can contact as soon as possible. She just contacted me. So, that's, that's my only question. I like it, I really like the flow chart, it makes a lot of sense, and, um, I feel very comfortable with this policy coming to us. Anything else from counselors? Seeing none? Thanks again. And, uh, we move now to the question and answer period. Are there any questions or answers? Usually, they occur in that order. And if there are no questions or answers, then we're looking for a, a motion to...
Something to say about an approval, or was that in camera?
That's, uh, going to be in camera. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. At this time, I would move that council move in camera to discuss items related to Section 241B, Subsection I of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act at 8:26 PM.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion, all in favor?